Silver Lake Swim Night is the 18th of March. And again, this is for Erlanger residents only. You must show proof of ID. Liabilities will need to be signed upon entry at Silver Lake Swim Park also. Children under 18 have to have a parent or an adult present. And on the 24th is our City Government Day. It's supplied for 60 students. They're only allowed to do this trip one time. It is a very coveted trip. They get to go, it's a round robin type thing. Half of the kids take the bus and go all over Erlanger. And then we come back for lunch. And the children that have toured the administration, the fire department, the police department, and see how everything operates in the city building, then everybody eats lunch and everybody switches. And we take the second group where we took the first group the first time. The best thing, well, not the best thing, but the thing the kids like the most is the food. UDF gives ice cream. And it was very humbling because a lot of these kids are like underprivileged. And they asked the guy, this has been a couple of years ago, they asked the guy that was in charge if they could have more than one ice cream. And he never missed a beat. He said, "I have plenty of ice cream." He brought out ice cream for the kids and they started sticking it in their pockets. So, it was very humbling. And it's very rewarding and it works.
Do we have a bus driver set up?
It's going to be a regular school bus.
Oh, okay. Okay, good.
And Bill Howard's going to make sure they know the route.
Good.
Get on, Bill. I know. Get on, Bill.
End of report.
All right. And Mrs. Hoffman, anything further?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, then we've got Finance and Business Development. Mr. Blankenship, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you. On Saturday, March the 4th, we had our annual budget retreat. And we saw the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2018 and the proposed amended budget for 2017. We're working on fine tuning the budget estimates. And we'd like to have a committee meeting to go through that once that's presented. So if we could put that down for the, I guess it'd be the 21st. And also on the economic development side, we've had some discussions with Al Nayar LLC concerning the showcase properties. And we'd like to have a committee meeting on the 21st to discuss that as well with a possible Tiff district. And that's all I have. Mr. Bodie and Mr. Hahn are in the house. If they have anything to add. Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. All right, then we've got codes building and zoning. Mr. Burke, Mr. Nicely.
Only thing I've got, I've got a couple of things. Dave Hahn did send out all those reports. If anybody's got any questions, get ahold of Dave. If you have anything to say about. Now, I'm gonna, do you have a presentation, Ms. Fettie?
I do.
That you want to do before I, okay, you go ahead and do your thing.
I can.
Is that okay, Mayor?
Sure, yes. Thank you, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for taking the time to hear my proposal. Really appreciate just listening, you know, taking, taking the opportunity to speak with you. So, I'm proposing the modification to the nuisance ordinance for the backyard chickens. You guys, I want to first go through, I made a lot of modifications to the ordinance from, from talks that I've had with you guys and talks that I've had with other citizens. I wanted to make sure that I took into consideration the concerns that were voiced to me. So I want to show you the differences that I've made and get your opinions on them as we go through. And then I do have the survey results cleaned up and, and they look, you know, they have pie charts and we can go through them as well. And then I'll talk about how the ordinance change would actually affect the city. So if you'd like to move forward. Okay. So, I did, I did retain it at six chickens. I made a small change in the beginning, just saying that all of the following criteria has to be met. So all of these conditions have to be met in order to obtain the permit. We're maintaining it with no roosters, can be kept, harbored, or maintained. Chickens are contained. So I took your, your concern, Ms. Kyle, in with the chickens being able to fly, they do have to remain contained in the coop. Fence or other permanent removable structures intended to confine chickens so they prevent the free range. So another change that I did was I changed it to 50 feet from the nearest property line. So it had previously been 50 feet to the nearest residence. So it was a little more difficult to find that information through PDS. So what I did was I changed it to, to the 50 feet to the nearest property line. So technically you need 100, 100 feet across and deep to have the ability to, you know, put the coop in the middle and have 50 feet to the property line. I made this change because when you look, when you ask PDS for documentation, their system doesn't have the ability to tell you 50 feet to the nearest building. So if we want to make it easier for our codes enforcement officers to be able to get this information and who can and cannot be able to have chickens, I wanted to make it easily accessible information for them. So I went to PDS and got them to provide the maps, which we'll see in just a minute, with the 500 versus the 50, what parcels would be, if it would be restricted and which would be unrestricted. And then they even went a step further, which is really cool, and they got an Excel spreadsheet that broke it down and gave every property owner and every property that would be allowed to have chickens with the 50-foot barrier. So now we have a clean list. Then I took it a step further last night and I took out all of the HOA and apartment, apartment buildings. So now we have an even cleaner list that specifically say who can and cannot have chickens under this, this 50-foot proposal. We're going to stay with no slaughtering or processing of chickens. I heard a couple of concerns about that, people actually wanting to be able to do this. So I just, I kept it with no slaughtering. Let's see here. The owner of the land planning to keep chickens has submitted an application and must obtain a permit from the city clerk. I think we had previously had it as the city manager, but we switched it to the city clerk to make sure that it followed our procedures properly. Neither the chickens nor any product thereof can be used for commercial purposes. So we can't set up shop. We can't start selling our eggs, selling our chickens, that kind of thing. So it's purely for your own personal, personal use, basically. Chickens are to be kept in a clean, functional, and sanitary condition, free from preventable offensive odors. When you're talking about six chickens or less, the, this is pretty easy to maintain if you want to. Thank you. Okay. This is the really important addition that I've made. So chickens must be purchased through a hatchery that is NPIP certified. So I heard the, the concerns about the salmonella and the avian flu, the possible diseases that you can, can get from chickens. So I did a research. I called an epidemiologist from the US Department of Agriculture. And I got his take on how these diseases, how salmonella is spread, and, you know, how we can mitigate the risk as much as possible. So, the university, USDA created the NPIP plan. So it's the National Poultry Improvement Plan. And hatcheries all around this, the United States, they take part in this, they took part in this plan. And basically the chickens are, they're tested. So you're, you're basically making sure that you're receiving, you're buying clean chickens that do not have disease, do not have salmonella. So when you're starting off, when I was talking to this epidemiologist, he was explaining that if only we could, could put this rule across the whole United States, we'd be excellent. He said, "If you have the ability to put that into the ordinance, that's fantastic. That's going to drastically mitigate the risk of spreading disease." Okay. So the coop must be covered and cure and be at least two feet above the ground or at ground level for roosting area. This all remain the same. We're going to do coop must be adequate size to allow four square feet per bird. That's pretty, when I was looking across Edgewood and Independence and Fort Mitchell, that's a pretty standard. Some have three, three-foot square feet, but we were going to put four. And then the owner shall maintain a predator-proof coop and food storage. That remain the same as well. I think the only change in the Section B was a little bit of the verbiage that Mr. Blankenship had, had suggested to, let's see here, to allow the inspector to come on the premises for compliance with the code, basically. I took out the reasonable suspicion part. Okay. Okay. So in regards to the permit, you know, basic information needs to be listed, house name, contact information, a completed adjacent property owner consent form. So basically what this document is, is giving everybody the, the right to decide whether or not they want chickens next door to them. So I want to make sure that the, the neighbor is being provided the list of conditions that are to be met and that they're agreeing, they're agreeing that their neighbor's going to be following these rules, basically. Basically this document is giving everybody the same ability as an HOA. Everybody has the, the right to say, "No, I'm, I'm good. I would actually prefer not," or on the flip side, you have people that are saying, "No, it's okay. It's fine." So this gives the ability for that neighbor to actually make that choice. Number of chickens intended on the location, and then an application with the conditions met and their situation. Then the next line is, you know, the subdivisions that already put restrictions in, they're going to maintain, basically. Okay, go ahead. Okay. So the survey rate results. There were 175 residents that took the survey about loosening up the chicken restrictions. There were four surveys that I removed. I didn't want any duplicates. So I went through the survey data and took out any duplicates. The survey ran for a one-week duration. And it was advertised on the city website, the Facebook page, and it was shared by a great number of people. The, from the original 179 surveys that were taken, 68 responses were generated from the web link on our city website. And then 111 were from Facebook posts and shares. Okay, go ahead. Okay. So the biggest question that was on the survey was basically, "Do you support a change from 500 to, to the ordinance that had been listed in the, in the, in the survey?" Out of 175 results, we have 99 yes, 64 no, and 12 I need more information. Go ahead. "Are you interested in having backyard chickens?" Was the, the last question. 175 results, yes, 35, 115 no's, and 25 maybes. So it was kind of interesting. It was, I was surprised by the, the percentage of the maybe. Go ahead. Okay. Some, some council members have asked me to take out, so I looked at the survey and I was able to look at the different addresses and pull out the HOAs just so that we can, you know, for, for argument's sake, so that we can truly see the people that would be affected. Out of the 175 surveys, there were only 27 that lived in HOAs. The HOAs that I, that were taken out of the survey were Lakemont, Brightleaf, Trails of Doe, Ron, and Sheerborn. Out of the 149 results that remained, 60, or I'm sorry, 88 were yes, 51 were no, and 10 where I need more information. The 27 HOA results were 12 yes, 13 no, and 2 I need more information. So my deduction here is the, out of the 175 results, only 15% were people that were living in HOA. By removing the HOA results, the yes increased by 3% to 59%, and the no decreased by 3% to 34, while the I need more information remained unchanged at 7. If we're only looking at the non-HOA results, a higher percentage is in favor of loosening the restrictions and even, and even if you take into consideration 7% of I need more information. Okay. So this is how it looks right now. So this, this is your map of Erlanger. You have the restricted parcels, the unrestricted parcels. The green is a little difficult to, to see right now, but the restrict, unrestricted parcels are only 13, there's only 13 in the whole city. I went on to the GIS viewer and I was able to look at who owns these properties and who actually can have chickens. So it's a pretty, a pretty low, pretty low number. There you go. So only four parcels out of 6,560 are privately owned by residents of Erlanger and able to have chickens. So it's a 0.06% of parcels. So it's a very minute number with the current rules. With the proposed 50-foot radius, it increases that 13 to 1,046 of, it's an increasing percentage of 0.06 to 15.9%. But you have to take into consideration that some of those 1,046 are HOAs and some of them are apartment buildings. Some of them are churches that aren't going to have chickens anyways. So it actually lowered, once I did all of the, once I went through the data and pulled out the HOA and the apartment buildings, it dropped it down to approximately 673 parcels that were actually going to be affected. So we're looking at only about 10% of parcels that we would be able to offer the, offer the ability to have chickens. Okay. That's it. Anybody have questions?
Great job.
Yeah. It's a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great job.
Mr. Nicely?
For the neighbors has to be okay.
Hey, Don, can you speak into the mic? Yes.
The neighbors have to give the okay.
Okay, yeah.
The neighbor moves out and another one comes in, you've got to get their okay.
We need to talk about that. We need, that needs to be decided. It's something that needs to be decided because there's two ways to go about it. You can go about it.
Jess, use the mic.
Sorry. Sorry. Okay. So there's two ways to go about it and we can, we can talk about it and see what, what would work for us. So you can either do one where buying the piece of property next to chickens shows your consent to the chickens. Or you can have it be on maybe a three-year timeframe or a permit where it has to be every three years, you get the permit updated. And then at that point, they have the ability to object. Or you can do it on a yearly basis. So it's, it's up for negotiation. I mean, it can be talked about and we can see what would work best.
Well, what is your proposal on that now?
My proposal is that it's the, you're giving consent when, when you buy the property.
Yeah, well then, someone gives a consent and they move and one else comes, they don't want them. They've got to have their permission, is that correct?
That's not how it's written, but it can be. If, if you, if that is something that needs to be in the document, the ordinance, then we can definitely make that happen. Because I've had questions on that myself. Any other questions? Sure.
Go ahead, Renee.
Are we actually going to discuss this now with the citizens or are we going to wait till the citizens are allowed to talk? Or what are we actually doing here?
Right now, we're, you know, the idea was presenting the numbers. I would imagine we're going to talk about it a whole lot more later.
Well, I have, I have one number.
Sure.
There's 18,082 people in the city of Erlanger and 179 responded to the survey. So I don't think the squeaky wheel should get the grease. Thank you.
Okay.
May I say something to you?
Sure.
Okay. Phenomenal job. Seriously. I told your dad today. He ought to be very proud of you. That was a huge undertaking, especially for a brand-new council member. And I really heralded you for that. Pardon me. However, I had chickens as a kid. My grandma had chickens, okay? I love all animals. I really do. I have a problem with creating an ordinance or changing an ordinance that does not affect every citizen in our community. It, I just, I just really struggle with that. I always have. You know, the fact that someone that lives on Graves Avenue might be able to have, I mean, I could have chickens in my house. You know, I've got a huge double lot. And then, but because you live in an HOA, you don't ever have to worry about the problem. My second huge, huge, huge issue is trying for, our codes officers are totally overworked now. I mean, they, they can't keep up with what we got now. And them trying to manage and monitor, you know, however many people choose to have these chickens, it's just one more thing on their plate that they just don't need. And I really and truly believe, honey, with all that is holy, that the neighbors, you're going to have neighborhood fights over this. I am so convinced of that. So, I mean, I, please, I just heralded your work. I just have to be honest.
I understand. But you can't legislate based on the possibility of a neighbor fighting. Because neighbors fight about all kinds of different things.
But it doesn't affect all the neighbors, honey.
But if, yes.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't affect anybody that lives in.
Either does the way the current ordinance reads, either.
HOA.
But it's giving everybody the same right as the person in the HOA. It's giving them the right to, to say, "No, I don't want it next door to me," which is in essence exactly what an HOA is.
It's a literal nightmare to do the tracking in the paper or...
I actually have the Excel spreadsheet with the list of people that are allowed under this, under this proposed ordinance. I have the list. So basically, I can provide that information to codes enforcement and they have a list of 673 people. If you're not on the list, you can't, you can't have chickens. Doesn't work. Because they're, the measurements aren't there.
Is the lady that you went to bat for?
No.
Is she permitted to have chickens?
With the 50, 50 feet to property line, no.
Is she going to pay her fines?
I am not speaking to her. I'm not here solely for one individual.
I know. I'm here for the whole city.
And so am I.
I'm not, I'm not saying you're not, honey.
Okay.
Just be a little bit more open-minded here, okay? I don't want to fight over chickens. Not worth it.
Number one, it's not about the chickens. It's the fact that somebody knew the law, broke the law, blaming us for their mistakes and behavior, and wants us to take care of them. And that's not why I was elected. I wasn't elected to worry about chickens. I wasn't elected to make chickens my priority. I was elected to do taxes. I was elected to make sure we have great services. I was elected to make sure that we keep good employees. This person broke the law. Now they, they did it. They knew they did it. They now have to accept the consequences. Get rid of the chickens or pay the fine. That's the bottom line. It's not about the chickens. It's the fact they broke the law, knew they broke the law. I will not condone bad behavior. We are not. We are not the judicial branch of government. We are the legislative branch of government. It is our responsibility to create an ordinance. And that's it. And look at it as factual, knowledge-based, and make a decision from there. We are not a judicial branch of government. We are not to order, make ordinances based on making a punishment. Okay? I'm sorry?
And we have three attorneys.
I'm sorry?
We have three attorneys that are paid to drive.
I've got to gavel.
That doesn't make you an attorney.
Doesn't make you an attorney.
I'm the judge.
Mr. Nicely?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
We're talking, you hear me okay?
No.
You hear me okay?
You need your mic.
While we're talking about chickens and vicious smelling, you're short of partiality when you have a dog. The labs are the most dangerous animal there is. You could have a lab or pit bull, but you can't have a little old chicken that's not going to do it. And dogs do smell bad. Chickens don't smell that bad.
That bad?
Now, why do we, and if you come along and say you can't have a chicken, then we shouldn't be able to have dogs or snakes and other animals. That's my point. I think some, she's going, this lady's going to be discriminating against if she can't have a chicken and people just have a pit bull that door or lab. And labs are the most vicious dog there is. And they do stink. Because I have one that's stuck.
All right. Thought I saw one other hand up. Ms. Kyle?
I'm surrounded by dogs and I don't smell these dogs. I'm sorry. Most people do their due diligence with their dogs. I just, I have to admire you, Jessica. My gosh, you've done so much work for this project. You know, it's unbelievable.
She has.
I'm looking forward to working with you on other issues because if you're that adamant about a thing that you really feel strongly about, that's great. That's a great quality. I don't want to squelch you, but, you know, as someone mentioned in here, we have over 18,000 citizens. They don't all get on Facebook. And especially the citizens on this side of Erlanger, they're older, they don't, a lot of them don't even get on the computer. A lot of people don't even know that we've got this issue going on. So, I mean, I, the way I look at it, I have to, I personally feel that I have to represent the majority of the citizens. The majority probably do not want this.
Okay, here's, can I, can I say something? Because you guys asked for the survey. You wanted to hear from more people, right? So I, that's what we did. We provided a survey. We put it out on our city website. Did any of you guys get somebody to, to, to take the survey?
I did.
Yeah.
I took the survey.
Did you post it on your Facebook? I mean...
No, I did. And I talked.
I made sure that I advertised it with my council Facebook page and my personal. I had my husband share it out. I didn't give my opinion, but I had him share it out and say, "Look, we want to hear from you guys." So we have to also take a responsibility that it, we have to go out and find people, you know, that are going to take the survey, the survey. We have to get the message out to everybody or we're not doing our due diligence in getting a tremendous amount of data. We took, we got 175. That's probably more, I mean, more than we, we could've if, you know, Facebook didn't exist. I mean, I mean, there's...
We're never always going to agree on everything.
Less than 1%.
I understand. Less than 1%.
And the other thing is too, we have been discussing this chicken issue since...
For four months.
No, no, no. Since last May.
I know. I was here for it. I was here for it all.
I know you were. Now, that's good. But I mean, you know, after a while, it's like, we need to just take a vote and move on.
Correct. I, I agree. We do.
Each one of us has our own group of people that elected us, that we know very well, that we talked to. They may have not gotten on the survey, but the people that I talked to, most of them did not want this. I've even had people approach me at the grocery store, "You're not voting for the chickens, are you?" And I'm like, "Well, probably not." But, you know, and the other thing too, the codes officers, they're... their job is a nightmare, because here's the deal. You can make all the rules you want. People are never going to follow all these rules. They go, they try to enforce them. We can't go out and confiscate the ladies' chickens. We can't confiscate the dogs that are running loose. We can only put a, a citation against these people, but we cannot remove the animals. I, I just think it's...
But do you not create a law because, or an ordinance, because somebody's going to break it?
I don't create laws that we cannot enforce. And this one, to me, is a nightmare. I'm sorry.
We'll come back with you. Why do you discriminate a person? Erlanger is supposed to be a city we love. She was talking about people objected how with chickens. I've talked to hundreds of people in, in the business, and I have never met one that says, "No, I don't want chickens." Now, Erlanger's supposed to be a friendly city. Ask that lady who's got the chicken. Harmless chicken if it's a friendly city. Have a lot of property, and they, and would pay a lot of taxes personally. I have no objection if someone have a chicken next door to any property or even where I live. And if I, if they do, I've got the option of saying, "You can't have chickens." You discriminate against this lady for not having chickens, but yet I can have a mean dog that will chew you up.
Okay.
And a chicken has never chewed anyone up.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion that we vote on the chicken ordinance.
I'd like to make some comments still.
There is no chicken ordinance yet.
We're going to, we're going to have it, if we can ask Mr. Gatlin or Mr. Wickman to create the actual legislation for it.
I, I vote we don't.
No, I vote you do not do that.
It costs us money.
Well, I've already created it, so...
But you're not an attorney.
But we still have to pay them for doing it. I mean, we, we've had a vote before. I thought, uh...
I would like a real vote.
Last summer, once she came, we voted that we did not want to address this problem. Then somehow it popped up again. And if we do not want to, if we, if the council is not going to support the ordinance, I see no reason to belabor this any farther.
Some of the people in the audience would like to speak.
Yeah.
On this before we vote.
They don't have to, who wants it? They're not going to change anybody's mind.
I want to speak, but no.
Frank, what do you, Frank, what should we do? What can we do?
All right. I was just talking with Mr. Gatlin. The thought would be that we go ahead and take a straw poll. Each, each council member, say if they're for or against it. And, um, yeah, and then we would still open it up to the, to the public to speak afterward or before legislation.
Do we want the public to speak first before we do that?
Yes. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you meant right now.
Yeah, so, so my thought would be to just kind of clean this up a little bit, is to just go back to the agenda. Let's run through the agenda and then allow citizens to comment at the time of the agenda and under new business. I think we could do, basically, as a motion as to whether council gives the authority for either Mr. Wickman or I to move forward with the ordinance.
I would like to make comments after the residents speak.
That's fine. But I just think that way we keep it a little cleaner and within the confines of the agenda.
Okay. All right, so we'll move along then. So, we've heard the reports of our committees. Do you entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Sudkamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Okay, the reports of representatives. Okay, so, do we have a report on the Chamber of Commerce? Mr. Burke, Mr. Blackenship?
No report.
Do we know when the next meeting will be?
I do not. Mr. Burke is going to check the schedule.
Okay. We'll, we'll check back with him when he gets back in here. Historical Society, Mrs. Kyle?
Yes, I do have a report. I think we mentioned last month that the Historical Society did win a grant. So, Pat Hahn and Michelle Brosman attended a grant award ceremony on February sixteenth in Frankfurt, where they received a Kentucky Local History Trust Fund grant in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty cents for the Historical Society. And then this money is going to be used to purchase and utilize basic conservation materials in the historic Erlanger Depot Museum. And I believe Pat Hahn or someone from the Historical Society shared pictures with all of us, so it was really a great, great event. The Depot is selling author Mike Dew's book, Grave Consequences in Erlanger, Kentucky. Each book is fifteen dollars, with a portion of this going to the Historical Society for the Depot Museum. So, they're actually selling his book. And it's really a good read, so you have to get it. The Depot Museum opens on March fourteenth. It will be open Tuesday and Thursday from twelve noon to three P.M. And then they're also open on Saturdays from noon until five P.M. The caboose is open only on Saturdays from one to three P.M. Volunteers meet on Thursdays at ten A.M. in the museum for a few hours. Anyone is welcome to join them to assist with museum projects. So, if you want to volunteer, meet with them at ten o'clock Thursday morning at the museum. And the next meeting is tomorrow night at seven P.M. at the Depot, and that's located at thirty-three nineteen Crescent Avenue. And I believe they have a speaker for tomorrow night's meeting, but I can't remember his name. So, they usually have a presentation of some sort.
It's Don Thomas.
Okay, yes. And then, then they have their business meeting after that. But very interesting, so...
Great. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. I, I talked about the next meeting for the Kenton County Mayor's Group. The last meeting, Mrs. Fettie attended as well. Was there any summary that you wanted to give from that?
Yeah, they just wanted to let us know that the FCC was wanting to take over the creation of the contracts with the cellphone companies when creating these small cellphone towers. PDS wants, wants to remain with the process that they have. So, they're trying to, they're putting together a, a letter to go to the FCC to just state, you know, that they'd like to remain, remain with their process. And they wanted to be able to get the support of all of the local ci, all the surrounding cities and the council members.
Yeah, so, the, yeah, the Federal Communications Commission wants to regulate these mini cellphone towers. And they, so they've put out proposed regulations. And, yeah, and so PDS is saying, "We don't need you to do, we don't need a federal guideline here. We've got a local, a local board that can take care of regulating it here locally." So, PDA, or I'm sorry, yeah. The Mayor's Group was putting together a resolution among the Mayor's Group that they would support PDS in this. But they were also asking that each city put together a resolution as well. And if you think that it would be something that we would be in support of, then we can draft something to that effect. I see, I see a couple heads nodding. Yeah, I see probably more...
I can get that information to you all, because that, there's, there's a little bit more to it than what was just done. We've been working on this for several months. I wasn't there at the Mayor's Group meeting, so I can't tell you exactly what that presentation was. I can tell you, I've seen the letter. PDS just simply did responses to questionnaire that was sent out by the FCC. They have been approached because the cellphone companies are now thinking that the restrictions that are in place locally are too restrictive. So, I've, I've got a lot of that information. I can send it all to you, but it's definitely something that we want to support, is, is that letter coming from the Mayor's Group. And PDS crafted the letter, but the Mayor's Group's signing off on it. It's definitely something that we, we want to support, to allow PDS to do that. It, there's, there's a whole bunch of different regulations when it comes to those. I know the two attorneys here have been seeing all the information that's been going back and forth, and I know that they're, the comments that I've gotten from them are supportive of all those things, too, so...
All right, thank you. All right, then, KLC, I don't think there's anything new to report there. We talked about the upcoming budgeting seminar. Municipal Government League, Mrs. Pitts? Are you aware of it?
I, I'm waiting to be, I'm trying to find out how to find out where the meetings are or when they are. I'm not on their email list yet.
Yeah, and I, I went back and trying to find...
Yeah, I looked it up and everything. Lisa Cooper used to be, when I used to be on it, but I couldn't find any information, so...
Yeah, and I put a call into Meg and Sandfoss as well to see. I think it's May or later is when they, they're going to have that...
Usually, there's one every quarter, so there should have been one by the March...
Okay. Well, I, I left her a few messages, so we'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, OKI, Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, so they actually, their meetings are usually typically the second Thursday at ten thirty. We do have a meeting this Thursday. It is an executive committee meeting. I was just talking to our COO there about that, and I thought I would be able to attend, but I actually be out of town for this one. So, I would reach out to Mr. Knuckelman to make sure that Houston Road maintains that. And I will also send something out there to him, so, because it is Thursday, not tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
And those meetings are kind of hit and miss. They have some, they usually don't have them in the summer.
Where, where are they again? Where are the meetings?
They're down, they're down at the, on Pete Rose Way down there. There's, yeah.
I did reach out to Judge Knuckelman earlier today. Left the message for that, so hopefully he'll carry on our, I guess, our desire to support that project.
And I'll reach out to Robin tomorrow to make sure she knows that, too, so...
All right. Thank you. All right, PDS. I don't necessarily have anything new to report, but I did mention that the next meeting there is March the sixteenth at five forty-five. That would be a good one to attend. I mean, just to see what their proposal is. They're trying to combine Kenton County Fiscal Court and PDS in the same building. Northern Kentucky Area Development District. There again, next meeting will be March twenty-third at noon. They're on Spiral Drive. And Kenton County Alliance, Mrs. Skidmore?
Yes, Kenton County Alliance meeting is always the first Tuesday of the month, which is the same as our council meeting, so there will always be a report. Kenton County Alliance met today from twelve to two and discussed many topics relating to drug and alcohol prevention. There were twenty-nine members in attendance from various school representatives. There is an active process being initiated to make all the elementary, middle, and high schools to be smoke-free. Lineman is already smoke-free. There is legislation to restrict the alcohol beverage control from allowing underage people from buying alcohol online to pick up at the store, et cetera. The bill was heavily non-supported by alcohol companies. Sixty against the restriction and three for the restriction. The Butterfly Metamorphosis is a huge success, and the grant will be reapplied for in July, and the funds will be awarded in August. Boone County and Paducah County have expressed interest in what Kenton County is doing with the Butterfly Project. The students participated in the silhouette program, where they write letters about their future without drugs. One student wrote that the reason she did not want to do drugs was so that her future would be brighter than her past. HIDA, or HI, it's an acronym for High Interstate Traffic Area. They're trying for multi-jurisdictional approval to cross state lines to prosecute drug offenders, mainly because the Kentucky and Ohio Bridge is too easy to access over and back. And they were trying for hope, health, and strength, not sad, shock, and trauma. One of the illustration points used today was, "There was an old man who sat by the river and just watched. One day, he saw a child in the river, so he rescued the child. The next day, the same thing happened with a different child. This continued until several people showed up to help rescue the children. The old man started walking up the riverbank, and several people asked what he was doing. He said he was going to see why the children were falling into the river."
Oh, that's neat. I like that.
End of report.
Good. Thank you. All right, the report of, reports of city operations?
Mayor, real quick, too, also, just to let everybody know, this is not a reporter representative, but Kenton County is having economic development meetings, and they are having those monthly. So far, they've been the first Tuesday at five-thirty at the Chamber of Commerce. So, we did, Ms. Pitts and I did attend tonight, and they are opening up the citizens also that are interested.
All right. And you said it's the first Tuesday of the month?
I believe that's where the last two have been, and I'm sure that's where they are, so... Yeah. They did get us, they did get us out in about an hour, so...
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right, seeing that Mr. Beox isn't here, I don't assume that we have a report from anybody else, do we? No? Okay. So, we'll move on to the city attorney, Mr. Gatlin?
Hey, just a few things here. First off, based on the conversation at the budget meeting and also what was reported by Mr. Cahill, we will have ready for first reading an ordinance at the next session in April as it relates to sidewalks and the obligations thereof, taking it off of the property owners. I don't know why I always have the hottest mic here.
You're just hot.
I don't know what it is. In the legislation, there's some things I want to bring to your attention. For first reading tonight, we have two annexation ordinances. These both have been discussed. One is twenty-three acres, which is owned by the Erlanger Lions Club. I have in my possession the consent agreement, which was signed by John Dunhoff and signed by the mayor, that will allow us to move forward with the consensual annexation of those twenty-three acres. There was a little confusion from Florence on this. There is still about a half acre of the Lions Club property, which is in the city of Florence. Obviously, we're not annexing that. The entire Lions Club property is about twenty-six acres. About an acre and a half was already within the, the city of Erlanger. Half acre was in Florence. The twenty-three is what we're doing first reading on tonight. And the second or, or annexation ordinance is for approximately seven-point-five acres. This is property that I'm sure people in this room would understand why we got it, but it's property that is running adjacent to the Cherry Hill subdivision. I, we also now will be annexing that into the city. Both of these properties were in Boone County. Boone County is aware of it. And there are some hoops we may have to jump through with the Boone County Planning Commission if and when we ever wanted to make map or zoning amendments on either of these properties. Not that I see that foreseeable. The final thing, which is just sort of a housekeeping issue, and I kind of apologize that I did not notice this before sitting here at the meeting. The resolution that was presented to us tonight relating to the Homeland Security Grant, that references the Model Procurement Code and Section forty-five A. We do not, we have not adopted that here in Erlanger, so I would ask that when we pass that resolution, we will just be striking through that language, and it will be pursuant to KRS four-twenty-four one-thirty. I think we had this issue last year, and if I recall, Sherry and Frank, I think that, that this was just a model resolution they proposed to us, assuming that we followed the procurement code, so we're just going to strike that language out tonight. And that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you. City Council Attorney, Mr. Wickman?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want somebody to address the question of what to do about the proposed ordinance in regard to chickens? Do you want me to address that now or after the public comments?
I'd say after the public comments. After the public comments?
Then other than that, I have nothing but the ordinance amending the... Amending Earlanger's 2443. It's on the agenda.
Okay. Is that something that we're going to talk about now?
No, I'll read it when it comes up under legislation.
Oh, okay, okay, I got you. Excuse me. Okay, thank you. All right, then, City Administrator, Mr. Fields?
Yes, sir. Since we've already, I believe that we've already put the TIF discussion and the budget follow-up discussion on the committee meeting for the 21st. Would also like to add waste collection conversation for that night. Should be very brief. Staff has a recommendation ready for council to move forward on. So I believe that'll be a very brief conversation about waste collection. I would like to say one thing about Saturday. I thank you for your attention all day. It was, it was a long day. I, I don't know how we make it any, any, any shorter than what we did, but thank you for, for being there and taking part in that and the follow-up discussions that we'll have next, in the next two weeks will give us the guidance to put that final document together. The reason I want to make sure that we get those things done then is because, you know, we, we are on a timeline here. So we need to have the first reading in May, second reading in June, in order to have it fast by the first of July, unless we want to have special meetings somewhere along the way. So that's the reason for all those, but they should be pretty short, hopefully. The TIF discussion and the budget discussion will probably take up most of that time. We'll make the other one as quick as possible on the 21st, I promise. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. No, wait a minute. This is, this is, this is personal. So I know Mr. Chisenhall's sitting back there. I thanked him earlier. And I know at the last meeting, I wasn't here due to, to a death in my family, and I want to thank you for everybody that reached out to me, sent cards, emails, those kind of things, calls. I appreciate it all. Thank you very much. And I'm sorry I missed the meeting. I would have rather been here than where I was, but thank you for all of your thoughts.
Thank you, thank you. All right, you've heard the reports of the representatives and city, and city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. All right, any correspondence this evening, Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so now we're to the time where we are at citizen and public comments. All right, first up, we've got Mr. Vito La Court.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mrs. Sudkamp. I do agree Jessica did do a fabulous job. I was very proud of her. And I do appreciate you acknowledging that. It was a very thorough, very professional report, and I look forward to more detailed reports from her in the future about the things that this council should consider because I think that that's desperately what this council needs. Perspective on how to do the job in an efficient, considerate, courteous manner, presenting the facts and judging only by the facts, how you make your decisions and your rulings. To that end, I sent out an email asking some questions to all 12 city council members. Eight of you were kind enough to respond. I thank you for that. Your insights were very helpful, okay? It helped me understand my role as her dad to try and help her understand issues and where they come from. We're confidants. We're friends. I respect everything that she does and she's wonderful at it, okay? But at some point in time, I hope to see this council not be so dismissive of the average citizen, not be so punitive in their actions and in the reasons why you give for the things that you do. Some of the responses here tonight were downright appalling. Absolutely. This is not about how you punish a citizen. It's not whether or not you decide an ordinance. It's not how these things should be done. I think Mr. Wickman would agree that that's an inappropriate, inappropriate way to decide an issue. It's not who you like and who you don't like. It's not what we do here. You're supposed to be above that, and I hope that you will strive to be better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gary Meyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'd first like to congratulate NKU on winning 59 to 53.
I had a DVR, really?
I can always be a spoiler.
I can go to sleep early tonight, thank you.
All right. There was a couple things that I, that I, that were mentioned just during the, the chicken conversation. And, and one, I think the question was, "Why are we still talking about this now?" If you recall back into, I think it was October, Mr. Fields, rather than implementing that fine right away, suggested that they would wait until the new council convened, have additional discussions about it. So I, I believe that's the reason that this is being discussed again now. In, in relation, you know, to the, the breaking of the law, I think if we recall, you know, even last year when we were talking about trash cans in the city, there were a number of council members that actually admitted to breaking the law, and yet they were not fined for, for doing so. Instead, they, we decided that something needed to be changed and let's, let's make a change. So a lot of times, you know, I think these things won't get brought up until there is an, an instance. I think she should pay, you know, the fines shouldn't happen, but it's an opportunity to continue to talk about making changes that might be in the betterment of the entire city. You know, when we talk about the trash cans, we say, well, there's only 170 some odd respondents